Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What's going on? What's going on? It's Super Dave back at it again with the PA Politicare Revolution Podcast. And we're back, back here to give you some more of that good political information by letting you know what's going on with the city. And we have a good one here today, right? I'm a kinda, I'm kinda, you know, probably trying to wrangle Russia, but I'm trying to, you know, probably not give too many bells and whistles on this. I'm trying to get this one through, right? What's going on today? What's going on today? We're gonna, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna play a council meeting. This will be the part one of this, right? Going to play a council meeting, right, of do like a reaction video. Playing a council meeting of what's going on with the health department, right? Uh, some of you may or may not know, right? The, the city was, was supposed to go ahead and move the, um, health department. Go ahead and move the health department from downtown to what up somewhere on, uh, what Ninth Avenue if I'm not mistaken. I forgot the actual location, but now a- a- as you know, the city is going again and getting into some complications, right? This is the problem when you have inexperienced people on the council that doesn't have a clue what the hell they're doing, right? Gonna go ahead and, gonna go ahead and kinda get started on this, kinda show you what's, what's, uh, what's going on, man. Cause some of this stuff just doesn't make any sense, right? A lot of it just doesn't make any sense and we're going, you know, we're doing the same thing over and over and over where we losing money, where we shouldn't lose any money. And, and this, and instead of paying attention to what's supposed to be going on in the city, we have these narcissist type, um, mayors that wanna go ahead and burn your money on trips. So let's go ahead and kinda get started with this, right?
Right along with you. Next item. Uh, we, we don't have any employee recognition, neither do we have any correspondence. We have discussion items, however, a discussion and possible action regarding the status of the city's health department. And this has been requested by council member Ken Law. So Councilman Ken Law, you may.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a brief because, uh, you know, as of last, uh, meeting, uh, last Monday, I was, well, the entire council was notified that this particular project was gonna take an additional two years and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager. But, uh, we talked about this about four or five months ago about where we are with it and, you know, with the project. And we were giving information that we were still in the design phase of this project. And knowing that we're gonna have to pay based upon a resolution twenty-three sixty of the lease agreement with, with Motiva, we'll start having to pay twelve thousand dollars. Uh, and I really wanted to, uh, get the, the exact enact date when we're gonna have to start paying this. Where would the funds come from? And why wasn't the council kept abreast of until this last Monday, the progression of the health department and where we, you know, what's the plan of the city moving forward? And I don't know who's gonna give this presentation and who's gonna provide the information. But once they give their information, I like to follow with that with some of the roadblocks and some of the dialogue that I hope that we can, you know, prevent future endeavors like this. Because eighteen months, we're, we're talking about is the end of June of the first of July. And to have to pay twelve thousand dollars and not knowing where the fund is gonna come. And if you multiply that times twenty-four, that's two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that, you know, we're, we, we didn't plan for this. And I understand we have roadblocks, so whoever is the staff person that's gonna give this info, this information to the entire council, I would follow up with that information, um, after they give their presentation.
Now, so I can get everybody kinda up to speed with this, right? Man, look, I, I don't, look, the city has gotten into some type of deal with Motiva, right? They sold Mo, we sold Motiva the building. Now, if we have to stay in there past what we, um, agreed for, right? We are gonna have to pay Motiva X amount of dollars, which is twelve thousand a month. They're gonna be the landlord. We sold them the building, but we're gonna pay them goddamn rent. Twelve thousand dollars a month for twenty-four months for two goddamn years, right? Man, look, I don't know how in the hell we getting these stupid ass contracts. See, see, that's the deal, right? You have a laser sitting, you have, we have an issue with the city manager and the city attorney. I don't know, look, I told you already before, the city attorney is probably the main problem in what's going on in Port Arthur, right? Because she sets the legal tone. She, she needs to be more direct in calling out Mayor Barti's lies on these trips. She needs to call out a lot of the issues that's going on with the EDC. But, you know, I suspect she's a part of the bull crap, right? And also here, I don't know how we get into one of these, these crash dummy type of contracts. But he's gonna go ahead and explain it and you're gonna see how incompetent this is, how incompetent this council is, right? How we have the blaming going on. This is part one of this. I'm gonna have, um, part two of it with former council member who said he's gonna give you a better explanation of what was going on because he was one of the council members that when this originally, you know, was agreed to it with that.
Good morning again, mayor and council.
Good morning.
If I may, I would like to provide just a brief summary on both the animal shelter and the health department, which would be item number one and two.
Now, I don't know why she giving the animal department and the animal shelter and the health department when it was clearly asked about the health department. But, you know, this is, I think, I think they pulled both of them. So I haven't took, I haven't taken a looking at the, uh, the agenda, but yeah, I think they pulled both of them. So let's go ahead and list, cause the animal shelter's got some crazy issues with it also.
You okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Since our last public discussion, which was November ninth of twenty-twenty-two, city staff has been working with consultants to finalize instruction plans, um, for the.
Oh, and also this kinda goes that whenever they get set the brief and I believe they're told with the, with the speaker, all right? Uh, I think she's assistant city manager, right? So Ron Burton kind of tell briefs them on what the speaker on like if a council member asks for one thing, they're gonna try to give them two things. So it's crazy.
Out the health facility, which is located at fifty-eight sixty Ninth Avenue, as well as identify a new location for city animals shelter. With the health department on December seventeenth of twenty-twenty-one, exterior renderings and wayfinding drawings were forwarded to the city council via email illustrating the exterior facade of that building. In January of twenty-twenty-two, the city of Port Arthur entered into a second agreement with Sigma engineers to design a new COVID vaccination clinic in that new facility. The addition was made to the plan set and went under review with various departments. During this period, Sigma representatives met with the IT department to address and finalize concerns involving the telephone system, data drops and other networking needs that would be needed at that facility. Staff expected construction plans to be finalized, um, and bidding to begin in February of twenty-twenty-two. However, some additional concerns and updates were needed with the mechanical plumbing and electrical plans that required further review and feedback. The mechanical and plumbing revisions were completed on February tenth of twenty-twenty-two with the electrical plan still pending. Consultants worked with the city's IT department to develop solutions for completing those electrical plans. The complete plan set was forwarded to the city on April twelfth of this year. The plans were shared with the building official, the purchasing manager, the director of health, the C engineer, as well as the project lead for final review. The purchasing manager forwarded the plan set to Gordian Group, who was to assist in developing a cost estimate and construction timeline for this project. The building contractor was to be selected through a cooperative agreement based on Gordian's fair and reasonable pricing analysis for the project. However, because we decided to use ARPA funding for the COVID vaccination clinic up, uh, for the, and that's a portion of the construction for this, um, particular submitting, um, facility, excuse me. The project must be bided through a competitive bidding process following the six affirmative steps required under federal regulations for procurement. Therefore, the purchasing department is preparing the documents for bidding for that, the health department. Now, moving on to the animal shelter, council was previously informed that the said location at fourteen oh one Nineteenth Street was deemed unstable for permanent construction due to the mode of demolition used when demolishing the city's for, former water treatment plant at this location.
Think this on Nineteenth Street former water treatment plant, I think off of Steelway, Nineteenth and Steelway, if I'm not mistaken, or somewhere around there.
A cost estimate was provided to city staff and this was provided by Joe Wilson with Arsenal Wilson and Cole regarding the mitigation of this site and was roughly estimated at half a million dollars. And this is if we were to go and try to remove, um, the building that was previously demolished, bring in field dirt to stabilize that site for development. This only included the area where the building footprint would take place, not the entire site itself. Um, with that said, staff began scouting other city-owned properties, which have been located outside of the special flood hazard area. Um, and those areas include HO Mills, any property on Pleasure Island, Sabine Pass, and some other areas of the city. Um, like around the library, civic center, all those areas are considered special flood hazard areas. For a possible relocation for the shelter. Based during our discussion with the city manager, we found that the former Saint Mary Hospital property would be an alternative location for this development. We are currently conducting a feasibility and needs assessment of that property, um, which entails us reviewing and have reviewed, um, the deed to ensure that there was not any deed restrictions. Also following up with environmental studies as well as developing a conceptual layout because there are future uses for that site as well. And so we will provide an update upon completion of this phase with city council. We will also review the current zoning and recommend a possible amendment if that is needed. A meeting has been scheduled with our consultants, who is PEGO for the animal, um, animal shelter. And that meeting will take place on Thursday, which is this week, um, at two PM to discuss other available options and next steps.
Okay, um, Councilman Ken Law.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pam, for your presentation, but I still have grave concerns about, uh, one, being transparent with, uh, informing the council of these developments and, uh, that you spoke of earlier. You know, I know we, uh, a couple of months ago, we spent about ninety thousand dollars on HVAC system at the health department that we had to, that was having issues with. If we don't make a move now, we're talking about two years from now, spending two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars until we really find out, you know, where we at with the stages of development, uh, with the health department, uh, renovations. Uh, I understand that, you know, we've had flooding and the pandemic and material delays and all the good things and preventive maintenance with that building. It's an old building. But if we don't, you know, ensure the people, when we sold these certificates of obligation, that we would spend about four point five million dollars. And at this point, I think we spent about five hundred and five thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's alarming to me and it should be alarming to everyone because we're pretty much at month sixteen and we were basically at the same spot.
We had, we, um, Port Arthur, Port Arthur has to pay what, close to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for two years, right, for rent? In addition, we got to go ahead and, and goddamn pay for the HVAC. But if we're, you know, it's getting summertime and hell, the, the people inside, they're gonna need some AC. But hell, if we would've been outside that room, we wouldn't have to pay none of that, you know, the, the two hundred and eighty-seven thousand nor the, the, um, the AC, right? Because, you know, when two, they're gonna renovate, they're gonna cut it out, they're probably gonna use that same, what, AC or whatever, they're gonna, you know, use their own. But we have to pay this because the contract says we have to pay for the maintenance in there, right? This is so crazy because you know how landlord, they pay for the stuff. Hell, we, we got into a contract with them where we paid them twelve thousand rent plus we have to keep up the maintenance on the stuff on a building that we ultimately sold over to Motiva. Wow.
And it's disheartening because, you know, I don't know where we're gonna get the funding to pay the twelve thousand dollars, but I wanted to be transparent that we highlight this information. The animal shelter, we knew that we found a ten-foot wall, you know, five or six months ago and we were looking for an alternate site.
Animal shelter, right? I think, if I'm not mistaken, they started building construction, found a ten-foot wall underneath the, the doggone site. So they don't even know what in the hell going on over there. So if I'm not mistaken, they didn't do the, some kind of feasibility test before we started construction, we wasted money on that, but I think they're gonna talk about that. But yeah, it, it's all kinda crazy type shit, right? All kinda crazy type stuff that an experienced council person would know how to direct the city manager and go ahead and taking care of some of these things. But when you have a, a mayor, right, wants to, wants to highlight himself, wants to make it look like he's the big boss. He's a, he has all the connects, he has, he knows all of these people. He kinda let, you know, in my opinion, he kinda let Mr. Ron Burton slip away with some of the, the, the duties with the city, right? You know, because it's, Ron Burton is the actual one that runs the city. The mayor tries to lie and fool people and making them think that he runs the city, right? Which he is not and he's an ultimately just one vote.
But, you know, why did it take five or six months to, you know, say, say, the old Saint Mary's, it's an alternate site? I mean, we've only spent what, sixteen thousand dollars on, on that?
Well, with the animal shelter, we did identify the site, but again, we are going through a feasibility and needs assessment of that site. What we're trying to avoid is the same as we did with the Nineteenth Street. Um, property is going into actual construction to find out these issues later and we've already.
And, and, and I don't know why there's not a part of the overall process, the feasibility thing before you, we purchase a building, before we start construction. It's just the gross negligence of staff and the, the leadership, right? The council is the main causes because we voted a whole lot of people that don't know a goddamn thing about it. And you have some people that has other alternatives, right? They don't have, they're, they're, they're not trying to, they're not trying to make the city better, right? They're not trying to make the city better. They're trying to work on real deals, right? In my opinion, like with the hostile takeover to EDC. But hey, that's another issue. Let's focus on this.
It would have expended millions of dollars in a building that would not be viable, um, of occupancy at that point. So we're trying to definitely cross our i's and dot our t's because we do take the fact that we have issued these certificates of obligation um, and be a little bit more sensible with, um, spending public funds to make sure that we have crossed all and researched and made sure that we have looked into everything before moving forward with that development. Um, again, we have been working with the architects on the animal shelter. So in terms of the design that has been completed, we're just making sure that, again, this site is viable. We did, um, receive this site from Saint Mary's, uh, where environmental things of that nature had not been conducted. So we're just kinda finding a lot, going through and making sure that everything has been looked at with that site. Um, with the health department, I do understand concerns with that. We have been in constant contact with Motiva, um, in keeping them abreast of the delays that we've had um, in terms of starting the construction phase. Um, we have sent letters to their representatives regarding even the investment that we've made in the current site. Um, they have assured us that they will work with us and just as long as we are progressing and keeping them abreast of where we.
Work with what? We, we have a contract with them. We have to pay them twelve thousand a month. Not only that, now we are holding them up for downtown renovation. Port Arthur is holding up Motiva for downtown renovation. That's crazy.
Are in that process. Um, we're trying to develop a, um, timeline for construction that we will submit with Motiva. Um, so when speaking with them on extending that lease, all these things are taken into consideration, but.
So now Motiva needs a timeline for construction. So something that's documented, so they kinda know what they need to go ahead and do because now we, uh, we, they have to wait for us now. They have to wait for us to go ahead and finish our building, the new health department building, so we can move everybody into it now. We're the burden now.
They have assured us that they will work with the city.
Oh, and it's crazy. We rushing Motiva to do this. You got Barti talking, hey, I mean, we need to go out and find out, we need to get some answers when they're gonna do this renovation. So hey, Thomas, this is on us now. You know what I'm saying? This is why I'm coming to you and telling you all this. All this shit, all this stuff is, is crazy. It's crash dummies, right? Crash dummy council, crash dummy staff. You don't have no leadership in the director staff, right? I mean, you know, the staff needs good leadership and that's where ultimately the problem relies, in my opinion.
Um, in regards to moving forward with that development.
And, and thank you, Pam. I just want to.
Let me just share with the council that I do have written communication in my possession that I will share with the council. Um, from Motiva, where they gave me their firm commitment in writing for credit for the HVAC system for ninety-seven thousand dollars. And I'm all waiting on at this time is a construction schedule. A construction schedule can only be produced by the general contractor when one is.
Okay, that, that's, that's nice of them. That, that's, that's nicer Motiva. But, uh, given that, but hell, we about to pay them two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so you know what I mean? We're always looking like a fool with these, um, with these people, right? We're always looking like a fool, right? So it doesn't matter if you have somebody, a mayor, a council member that supposedly is a friend with them, right? When we can't control, see, the mayor or council does not, you know, theoretically does not run the city. The, the way the city government works is not designed for the mayor or council to run the city as far as like the day-to-day operations. So if you have a faulty city manager, right? And you have a faulty city manager that can't conduct proper business with these, with these organizations, like the refinery, they're not gonna hire our people, they're not gonna have, it's not gonna create a good business atmosphere, right? To have those relations because we're gonna look like some goddamn fools. How are we gonna ask them for some jobs or demand them when the city, we can't, and, and, and and when we can't handle simple day-to-day operations, simple business? Now that's gonna make everybody look bad because we elected these crash dummies to go ahead and give the direction to the city manager, right? So we elected these crash dummies. It's gonna look bad because the crash dummies we elected, they don't have no clue of what's going on with the city manager. Because a lot of them don't know the type of government that we in. And if, and if they do know, they don't know how to stop it. So you need to get a person, in my opinion, you need to get a person that has some experience in city government, right? In city government that knows how to do things and fix things. That's what you need. You need somebody proven in the area with a lot of unproven crash dummies that doesn't know what they're doing.
Engaged. We are going through the six affirmative steps right now. The con, the, the project cannot be bided out under the corp system. You've got to go through the pro, proper procurement system in order to do that. When that is being done, a contractor is selected. A contractor will provide me or whoever is there with a construction schedule. And then we will move forward.
Hold up. I'm okay with that city manager, but nobody's disputing, uh, the, the, the schedule. We, we're just trying to make sure that we continue to be transparent because until you said that just, just a second ago, I had no idea we were gonna get some type of credit on the HVAC system, but I know that, I know. Okay, well, I'm just saying that, uh, this was.
Well, see, with, with the city manager, all these things kinda come a little bit shady. All of a sudden, the morning of the, the council meeting, you have this so-called letter. Well, hey, you need to display that letter, print it out to everybody. Hey, I wanna see the letter. It, it, it's at a point where you really can't trust a lot of these staff, city managers, they, they kinda, they're used to talking to dumbass council members, right? They're used, he, well, he's used to talking to some dumbass council members, some people that really doesn't understand government, right? And you have people like Barti that'll probably try to give him some cover, right? If he just lets him, if he just help him look like a, look like a big shot. So, you know, let's go on.
It's already put on the, the agenda to be discussed. And if that was, you know, so, you know, I would like to be kept abreast of it because I'm getting the questions and that particular project is in my district of what's the status of where we at. And I had no idea until you just spoke about that. But, you know, more or less, we have to be transparent. We got funding that we're gonna be spending, we're gonna continue spending. I, I totally understand that the schedule of the contractor, but we signed a lease agreement. And until we have it in black and white, I mean, that's hearsay. Until they come back before the council, we both agree that, you know, it's gonna be a different amount, then we can discuss that. But at this point, we can't discuss that because this current lease agreement, that's a resolution twenty-three sixty, states that we'll start having to pay twelve thousand dollars.
And right, and so that's, that's what I'm trying to say. It doesn't matter what they say, it matters what's in the contract, right? We're in a contract and what Motiva's gonna work with us for what? Deals are made with contracts. It's not about word of mouth. Because as you see, these fools can't handle, can't do what they, what they promised on the contract. So what makes you think, anybody's gonna deal with the city by word of mouth? This is why we can't get things done because people, when we, we can't handle proper business. That, that's what it boils down to. You need somebody that understands city business, city government.
On about June thirtieth, uh, July. So those are the questions I would hope that you would continue being transparent to the council because I didn't know anything until April eighteenth that you said it was gonna probably be another two years for this project. And that's a disheartening to this community. So if we can't contact the contractor to kinda get a, a schedule, uh, you know, possibility of a schedule, I mean, in eighteen months? I mean, that's disheartening. So that's why I put this particular, these particular items on for discussion, possible actions. And I'm glad that you came, Pam, to discuss this and give the city an opportunity to know what the city is gonna be doing in the next couple of months or years. So my, and ending, where would the money come from to pay this twelve if we have to pay the twelve thousand dollars a month? Where, what fund would that come from?
Again, counselor, that's a council decision. We will get to that.
Hold on, you say it's a council decision, but, but son of a gun, you do the budget. You prepare the budget for council. What do you mean it's a council's decision? You need to advise the council, right? You do the budget. Hell, get the finance person, get the finance person up there. See, this is what's the issue is, people. When, when the city manager is talking, he knows that the, that the council is incompetent, right? So when you're watching at home, you need to understand how some things should go. You don't just say, hey, it's the, it's the council's, um, it's the council's, you know, decision. Ultimately, yeah, it is, but him and the finance person need to be up at council talking about what's the financial situation? Where can you take some money from if you can? What do you need to do? Do you need to amend the budget? See, these are the things that needs to come to council when it regards to money, right? So that's what he should've told council. Not that, you know, it's up to you. They don't know what the fuck they're doing. They don't have no damn clue with the budget. They don't have no clue to say to take it out of goddamn streets, take it out of the police department, ta, take it out of public works, take it out of the health department. See, they don't have no goddamn clue of that, you know what I mean? So those are staff particular questions, right? So you just have to watch out for the slick talk of the city manager. Not too many people understand it, but you gotta, you gotta understand, you gotta watch them.
Bridge and cross it. When we got there, I have just received communication this morning from Motiva and I have just shared that with the council.
Now, now Ron Burton really thinks the council's stupid. He's gonna, you can see halfway smiling. He think the council's so stupid. He's going to repeat what he just said about the goddamn HVAC or getting credit for the HVAC. This is how retarded our staff and council members are because the man is repeating the same goddamn shit he just told him like that's some type of big deal. No, it ain't Ron Burton because we'll be paying them two hundred eighty thousand for what we shouldn't have been doing. We shouldn't have no reason to do it.
Motiva have indicated to me that they will give the city credit for the ninety seven thousand dollars that has been invested as part of the upgrade of the HVAC system. Motiva, I'm in constant negotiation with Motiva and um we.
What's to negotiate? You have a contract. There's nothing to negotiate. It's a contract. It's a contract. We have to fulfill the contract. Tell me this, do you think these business people, right? Have all this time to be talking to Ron Burton about some dumb ass shit? About some dumb ass um moving when they already have a contract? That's why they want to get a a construction schedule because they don't have time to be talking this goddamn clown about what he's gonna do, what they think they're gonna do, what they wanna do. They want business people want things on paperwork because the paperwork holds you to a certain criteria, right? It's a legal document that holds you to a type of expectation. So you can talk about you negotiating whatever, but hell, they ain't gonna listen to you because you signed the contract, dummy.
We'll get to that bridge when we have released a construction schedule which have not been negotiated as yet. A construction schedule can only be released when a general contractor has been procured under the procure.
Well, they should have been doing it. Why they haven't been doing it, right? They've been sitting down playing stupid.
Procurement regulations of the city.
So where are we at with the procurement regulations right now?
Ms. Langford just indicated. Could you repeat again, Ms. Langford?
Yes, the purchasing department is currently to um working to put those bid documents together uh for um the selection of a contractor for this particular project. I don't know the timeline with the purchasing department, yes.
Right.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, well, as soon as you can get that information, city manager, would you provide it to the council so we can update our uh constituents in the in the community about where we at with this because I'm getting phone calls, text messages, emails about where we at with the health department. And uh, you know, we're sixteen months in. And I understand that you're gonna get credit for the HVAC system for ninety seven thousand.
Keep repeating the same thing.
But come January, excuse me, uh, June thirtieth, June first, we'll have to pay twelve thousand. So I don't know how we're gonna do that. So that's why I brought this before the council and and the citizens of Port Arthur. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Councilman Marks?
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Langford, uh.
Oh, watch Marks about to throw everybody under the bus. Watch this. Yeah, I like this.
The uh Councilman Kinlaw is talking about the twelve thousand dollars per month that's uh included in the agreement that was negotiated in October of twenty twenty with Motiva. Am I am I correct? I was not on the council at the time. So when I came on board and and we started talking about this, uh the council or the city is responsible for, according to the lease agreement, we're responsible for maintaining everything in that building until we move out, right? And and I know we just received communication about the HVAC system that we spent ninety seven thousand dollars on. I'm not sure what's gonna transpire in the next two years. But those things would have to be negotiated on an individual basis. Am I correct in that assumption?
I would assume so.
Okay.
Well, there's nothing to assume. You have a contract, right? You have a contract. Everything, you just said the contract. Everything is up to you have to um as a city, we have to provide for everything in that thing. Now, most landlords, right, they provide the um the renovations on there, but we so retarded downhill. We get into agreement where we pay for the rent and the the renovation of the stuff that they're gonna actually tear down. Man, this is silly. This is silly.
So so now again, I was not on the council at the time when when this was was negotiated. The the sales price of that building was one point eight, seven, one point seven million. But because we moved out of that building before the terms of the CDBG grant, we ended up having to pay back eight or nine hundred thousand dollars to the federal government. Am I correct?
Ooh.
Yes, you are.
Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so the monies from the sale of that building was supposed to be used for the purchase of the building, the Health and Human Services building.
Hold on, let me just go back. Let me just go back right there.
So when I came on board and and we.
I wanna hear something that I that I I wanna hear this again about we losing money with this CDBG thing. Let me let me play it one more time. I wanna hear this.
We started talking about this, uh the council or the city is responsible for, according to the lease agreement, we're responsible for maintaining everything in that building until we move out, right? And and I know we just received communication about the HVAC system that we spent ninety seven thousand dollars on. I'm not sure what's gonna transpire in the next two years. But those things would have to be negotiated on an individual basis. Am I correct in that assumption?
I would assume so.
Okay, so so now again, I was not on the council at the time when when this was was negotiated. The the sales price of that building was one point eight, seven, one point seven million. But because we moved out of that building before the terms of the CDBG grant, we ended up having to pay back eight or nine hundred thousand dollars to the federal government. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so the monies from the sale of that building was supposed to be used for the purchase of the building, the Health and Human Services building on Ninth Avenue. Am I correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, what I'm thinking he's saying here, right? We must have had some CDBG money to go ahead and um and to use on the health department for whatever reason, right? And since we are moving out of this building or sold it or whatever, we have to, yeah, since we sold it because they go they go be they could be landlords, right? Since we sold it, technically moved out of the building, right? We're gonna have to pay close to a million dollars back. We're gonna have to pay the million dollars back, right? Nine hundred thousand dollars from one point eight million dollars, I believe, that we sold this building for. Now that leaves about nine hundred thousand left, and that was used, supposed to be used to purchase the new um building that's on the new health department building that's on Ninth Avenue that we're supposed to go in there and that they having some problems with right now.
Okay, so the the purchase price of that building was now nine hundred thousand dollars less. So we had to come up with nine hundred thousand dollars. The city had to come up with nine hundred thou-
I think he meant nine hundred thousand more because we lost that money.
Thousand dollars to cover the cost of purchasing that building that we're getting ready to to we're we're in design to 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 uh to rebuild, to renovate so that we can move our health department in there. And I'm hearing today that we're negotiating a new portion to that building for the COVID clinic. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so now that's an additional timeframe that we're talking about and additional monies that uh were not uh budgeted or estimated for, is that?
It was allocated through ARPA and council did um vote on that.
We did vote on it, but originally, originally, that was not, that was not included in in that 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 projected cost estimate.
That's correct.
Okay. And the reason I'm saying all of this i- is because the the citizens of Port Arthur, the council prior to uh the twenty twenty election, when 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 the council, uh all six council persons were were elected. Some of us were not privy to to those negotiations or to uh to 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 being involved in in how we decided what we were going to do. And so we came in and and now we're having to look at what's transpiring with our downtown redevelopment, our health department moving to uh Ninth Avenue, our uh animal shelter uh being 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 moved. Uh site had been chosen. We uh for whatever reason, we did not uh find out exactly what was underneath the ground there. And so now we're having to.
Marcus, this is because Marcus said, hey, Marcus said, hey, you ain't gonna be the only one catching some uh butt wounds around here. He called everybody out to show them how stupid they are too. So I understand, man. This is your major problem. We don't know how to conduct business on a municipal level. So you can have somebody with all the nice little ideas and all these certain type of connections. But when you have staff that doesn't keep council in the loop of things, right? And you have a new council, so they don't know how to motivate or to discipline or to instruct the city manager on the proper things that they need to do. And if he's not doing them, they're not capable of taking action or they don't don't know how to take action on what they need to do for the city manager, against the city manager to get him to fall in line with a lot of the things. So, you know, Marks exposed him on this one.
To 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 make changes in the plans that we had that 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 were far along in the process, which is costing us every step of the way. And it's, we've talked about this in private sessions about how we're to be good stewards.
Now, Councilmember Marks just probably admitted um another violation of the Open Meetings Act. Why would you all talk about city business? Particularly being good stewards of the city's money in private sessions? That's not a closed door item, sir. That's something that the citizen should know on your conversation about being good stewards of the money. That's not closed door sessions. That's not, it's not a closed door session item, I should say.
Of our citizens' money. And that 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 means that we have to do the the planning that goes into these things. And and we have to rely as as council people on what I like to refer to as subject matter experts.
Now, I just wanna remind everybody, you know, he's just, you know, he's just grandstanding situation right here, right? Of course, he's a hypocrite. You know, he he's spent, he's in favor with with two other uh council members that's already been on the EDC. He's advocating to goddamn spend city money for him to go to a basic EDC course, right? Which he sat on the EDC for several goddamn years. So you know, this, you know, this is just, you know, politics, right? This is, he's a hypocrite. He also um he he also advocated for the mayor to go on these goddamn trips, lying to you all, talking about that, the um the um the funds, right? The the that that the mayor has to go on these trip to get the government fund. So he's just a lying ass politician. So but, you know, he he makes a good point on this, but understand, you know, he's a hypocrite.
The people who are out there doing this every day. And 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 when we run into things like this.
Oh, just just thought about it, right? Just thought about it. Now, notice how he talks about a subject matter expert, right? And understand, your mayor is not a goddamn subject matter expert. Matter of fact, the mayor is more incompetent on a lot of things. So why would you see he's contradicting himself on some other stuff? Once he wants to advocate, the mayor going down to taking all of these trips for supposedly to try to secure us some grant money. Well, mayor, what you don't know a goddamn thing about half of these objects. So why would we send somebody like you that does not know what's going on, right? And this is another reason why your mayor does not run the goddamn city because he doesn't do the day to day operations. Uh, can I mark say, hey, we you going to subject matter experts on this? Which none of your council members are. So he just killed that argument that your mayor runs the city. You know how your mayor says he has a administration? And what you mean you have an administration, you damn clown? Marks just saying right here, we need to go to subject matter experts and the people that's doing the day to day operations as a city manager.
Council are the ones that are being looked at and saying, we don't, we don't have a clue as to what's going on up here. And it's at this point that Councilman Kinlaw asks for transparency. And that means that we need to be informed every step of the way. What's happening when changes occur? Because when we don't know and there are things are going on that that we don't know, we can't, we can't approve until after the fact. And then we are the ones left holding the bag. And and and.
I understand. Now he's make see, see, when everything's going good, right? You have people like the mayor and the council to acting like they run the city. But oh, this 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 crap is hitting the fan now and 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 feces getting slung everywhere. So now, hey, I'm just an old council member now. I'm not a subject matter expert. I don't know. But that's the goddamn lie that they goddamn tell you, right? They make you believe that they're making all of these calls. They're talking to Secretary Buttigieg, Pete Buttigieg, whatever his goddamn name is. We you're talking to the Houston goddamn mayor, um Turner, getting all these things done. No, you ain't getting this stuff done. See, the city government city city stuff is not getting done. So now you got people like the mayor on the council acting like they don't know what's going on. Hey, I'm just a council member.
I'm saying all of this to say is that from this moment on, whatever you all receive, what you know, we need to know. We may not be able to share it all. Some of it may be confidential and privileged. But we need to know be-
That's the problem. Most of them council members don't know a goddamn thing. You heard it right there from Marks.
Because we're the elected officials here and we're the ones that are actually taking all of that for for what's going on with all these changes and all of the increases in cost and expenditures. And and I'm just making a statement for the record that from here today is April twenty sixth, what the city manager knows, what the city attorney knows, what the uh city secretary knows, what the municipal court judge knows that needs to be given to city council so that we can actually function properly in our and and in our elected positions that it be forwarded to us in a timely manner. Because that has not been happening since I've been on this council since December of twenty twenty. And I just want that stated for the record.
Okay, Councilman.
Now, that's stated for the record. Now, that's stated for the record, council member does not really know what's going on. They don't run the city. That's including the mayor, right? You'll hear him say something later on too.
Uh, Councilwoman Moses?
Yes, um, thank you so much.
Oh, here comes Charlotte Moses.
For your report, Pam. I'm gonna go back to the beginning. May take us a while. The ordinance for the sale of the building was, um, signed September the second of 2020. Mayor Proton Moses, Scott Jones, Ken Law, Doucette and Frank were on the council. The other Frank. We all knew when we signed this.
Which Frank you talking about? I know you, you mean Ms. Jackson? I think if that's the Frank you're talking about, I think her name is Jackson.
The ordinance for the sale of the building, the resolution to lease the building. We all knew at the time it would take more than eighteen months to build a health department. That was one of our primary questions. We can go back.
Okay, now you heard us say that was a primary question. Now that's a primary question. So obviously they must have asked the question and they've, and, and, and they must have said, hey, you know, we can get it done. But, but I'm gonna go ahead and I'm kind of jumping ahead, right? I'm gonna let former council member here, Doucette, answer on the part two of this.
Even further than that, we knew as a part of the downtown plan, the health department was gonna be relocated back in 2013 when I was on EDC. We knew that there was gonna be a place for us to find this health department to be, previous, even a previous city manager was looking to put it at the old Bishop Byrne Building back then, trying to just keep it all in order. This was a part of a plan that was constructed here through the planning department, adopted by the city council and to move forward. 2013, I got on council in 2015, 2016, they were always looking for a place to have our health department and to house it. The opportunity.
Okay, let me stop right here again, right? I just want to make some different notes on stuff. When, when, uh, Ms. Moses, when Councilmember Moses tells you that this was a part of a plan, right? This is why your council members are not responsible for the day to day operations, right? Because you got these ignorant council members like Barti, such and such, and whoever, right? Um, Frank, Donald Frank, and you know, all the ones with the host, with the EDC hostile takeover. Once you, once you start teetering with plans, right? The, the, it, it puts, it puts a back, it, it puts timelines further away, right? You really can't get anything done. And that's why you have like bad business. So it's really the city manager's goal to go ahead and understand what's going on with the city, where you want to take the city and to go ahead and pound out and hammer out that vision, right? Now, council should have understanding and not to be teetering and dickering around with it like they're doing with the streets. They putting their own, they're putting their own, uh, personal agendas ahead of the city. So this is why you should not have council members running the city. So this is why it's improper for when you say a not like, like Marx said, a non-subject expert like Barti wants to change the motherfucking EDC when he doesn't have a goddamn clue of what's going on, right? So you have a whole bunch of problems. We don't look like we know how to do business. We look like some fucking clowns in the other, in everybody else's eyes, right? Let's go ahead.
Unity came along for Motiva to purchase the building. They did. We voted and the names that I called out, they're signed on this ordinance. We cannot act as if we are oblivious to the process and the timeframe and the timelines that it would take to get this process complete. We knew, it was stated. We want to be transparent, yeah, let's be transparent. We knew, this council knew, three of them that served. We knew that it would take more than eighteen months to get a building constructed. We said we would address it at the time that it came up and we would address it. But the best benefit at the time that we made this decision.
See, we, we, we lacking vision, right? That's why we lacking any type of leadership to make any type of decision. We putting all of this off.
Was to sell the health department building. It was dilapidating, there were things happening in the building. We all were aware. I wa, I don't miss meetings. I was at every meeting, check the record. So the construction time and plans, we're saying we not being transparent. We know that COVID has come. We know that we've had issues. We know that this building, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sound repetitive, was gonna take longer than eighteen months. We signed the lease agreement. We knew what the lease agreement was going to be. We knew the amount it was going to be and we all agreed that we would face that. And to be even more transparent, the mayor at the time who had just been newly elected didn't want that process to go forward. And we moved forward anyway. The building, that we made that plan. It wasn't done, the manager couldn't do it by himself, you couldn't do it by yourself, this council did it. So if we made a mistake or we did something that we didn't think was, should have been done at the time, then we should have spoke up and not voted that way. But right now, that's the process. The lease agreement is signed, the ordinance is signed, is signed and the building is sold. We're collecting taxes on the building. They're paying their property tax. And they, we are moving forward what decision we made at the time that we thought was beneficial and in accordance with the plan we adopted called the downtown plan. I'm, I'm sitting here listening to this and my, I, I, I can't, I can't imagine that we are all gonna sit here and act like those that were on council, that we had no idea or no clue and this just popped up. The truth is, it did not just pop up. This has been a work in progress. This has been the track that we've been on. And if a mistake was made, it's the council's fault. We can't go back and undo what we've done. We can move forward. I'm not gonna sit here and act like, cause silence is agreement. And I do, I was here. I would check my voting record, check where I was, that my name is on here. I take full responsibility as a council member that, that voted along with seven, the names I called out. They're all on this ordinance to sell the building. They're all on here, they've been here. It's been a part of the plan to move the health department where the constituents were. I'm not hiding, I'm not throwing rocks. I am going to put it out here. It was a part, everybody knew that that was to move the health department into an area as to where the constituents and where those clients lived. And there's always been a plan to move the health department north of seventy-three.
Now there you go with all this moving everything north of seventy-three, right? That's the problem why that's, we just continuation with historic gentrification and this, and, and, and historic, um, causing of degradation of south of seventy-three that's been historically planned against black folks, right? Against black folk, you know, minorities, whatever you want to call it, um, back in the days, right? So this is a bad reason to go ahead and try to move something, but. But from what I understand, right? The real reason why they moving is kind of because the building is dilapidated, falling down, it has a whole bunch of problems. So I believe, okay, knowing that, I can kind of agree with that, I can kind of okay that. Just knowing that, if that's the case, if that's, if that's not a lie and the building is trash and needs to get rid of, I can kind of agree that. But hell, I would have said, hell, bring that somewhere back down south of seventy-three, right? Hell, because shit, you gentrified the people up north, you move all apartment complexes up north and, you know, and that's not a reason to go ahead and continue to do it. This, to me, this is a conflicting type of vision, right? You have, some people telling, yeah, you want to do downtown real advisor, but you're moving the shit up north. You know what I'm saying? So I don't give a care if, cause you moved everybody up north. Now you want to say, oh, yeah, we gotta bring up it up north. Nah, you need to bring the shit down to the people that needs it, you know what I'm saying? Real, realistically, right? You have more land area people south of seventy-three than you have north of seventy-three. You have about what, three more, three times as many people south of seventy-three than north. So I don't know where they get that bull crap from. North of seventy-three, you have more people, you have a few apartment complexes up there, but nowhere does the land mass show that you have as many homes. You have more south of seventy-three.
We put it in, 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 in a part of the plan, we executed the plan and that is exactly how this ball went. Now when we deal with transparency, let's just be honest. That's all I'm asking this council to be, is let's be honest. We were all aware and we all knew that it would take us longer than, it takes you longer than eighteen months to build a garage. And we knew that we, it was gonna take us longer than eighteen months. And we said collectively at that time, that we would look at what we would have to do when the issue came up and negotiate with Motiva on how to move forward. I am done and I am sick of hearing what decision we made. We knew what it costs. We knew it was one point nine million, it wasn't enough to build another one. We knew what it cost. We knew that there was not enough money. We had to find funding for the health department. We reiterating, maybe Councilmember Marx didn't know, maybe this Frank didn't know and maybe Councilmember, Mayor Barti was here and all of the, the three of us were here. We knew. I'm not blind to it. I'm not hiding and I'm not covering my face. I'm not going after anybody. I want to make sure that we understand that the city of Port Arthur, yeah, you want to be transparent, let, I hope all the citizens here, that this was a part of a plan.
Oh, they were here.
And we were all aware. And if you didn't, uh, know what you were voting for, you should have asked some questions back then. That's over. That was September the second of 2020. The resolution and the ordinance was signed in October of 2020. We're in 2022 and it's time to move forward. And if the construction plan is in a phase of being bid out, we have to wait till that takes place. And in the middle of that, you have to be able to negotiate with Motiva to give us a, what, what, if it's not twelve thousand, we have the opportunity to negotiate back and forth with them to decide what a, 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 appropriate price will be for us to list that, to lease the building out.
How in the hell you gonna negotiate so when you have a goddamn contract? Charlotte Moses, please tell me that. How was you negotiating already signed contract?
But we knew that was coming to this. It was not a secret.
Okay, Councilwoman Moses, uh, Councilwoman Ken Law?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, maybe I think Councilwoman Moses, we're on two different playing fields because I think that when she mentioned that if anybody was there that didn't, wasn't aware, that's untrue. I was aware with the process because the subject matter experts came before your podium and spoke and get and delivered the message of what the plans were gonna be.
Subject matter experts, right? Now we want to listen to subject matter expert versus Barti going on these goddamn trips and lobbying for some shit he don't know about. How you, let's say motherfucker lobby, like, like he was talking about the COVID stuff, right? How in the hell is he going to lobby for COVID when Barti don't goddamn know what the fuck it, what the difference between a, a virus and a disease is, right? Remember when he chopped up that Kawasaki virus and, and mixed that shit up with, oh, I, I forgot, but he mixed that crap up. He was making, making up some shit on that shit. So understand, your mayor doesn't lobby for anything, right? We, and just like they said, it's supposed to be subject matter experts or people that run the day to day operations of the city, like the city manager.
Uh, so when she say that, uh, you know, we wasn't aware of it or, you know, I vote and rec state something differently, that's not true because I was aware and I was here. I put this on here because I wanted this council and this, uh, this staff and, and city manager to be transparent to what we are and where we are now. We did not know until last Monday on the eighteenth that it was gonna be an additional two years. We did not know until he got an email this morning from Motiva getting credit for ninety-seven thousand on HVAC system. So if you saying that's transparent, that's not true. Because I had no idea until the eighteenth about two year project. I had no idea until he just mentioned ninety-seven thousand dollars. Why wouldn't you want to have the health department and the population, the, the majority of population of your city? That's why we got into this. Now, the eighteen months wasn't provided from anyone on this council that this project would be, take eighteen months. Nobody on this side of the, the diocese said it would be eighteen months. It was on that side that said it would take that long. So when the councilwoman says that we knew, no, I did not know that. I rely on the subject matter experts to tell us so we can make informed decision, just what Councilman Mark stated. When we get those information from you guys, the staff, the experts, that's how we make our decisions. So now we sixteen months, nobody's throwing any fingers or blaming. I'm saying that in two months, we're gonna have to make a decision. Until it's in black and white, you know, from what I'm seeing and what I'm reading, it's gonna cost twelve thousand dollars, period.
Now, now, that's, that's a good point. Now Councilman McKenlaw is right. A lot of the times they do not tell council members what's actually going on. City manager lied to them, they keep repeating the same goddamn thing. We got seven, uh, ninety-seven thousand dollars reimbursed from HVAC. They, they, they are constantly misled, right? Because you have a lot of new, a lot of new council members. New, they don't know what's going on, people. So when you, when you looking at a mayor, right? You have to understand who you're gonna hire for. You have Willie Bay Lewis, somebody where there's no city government. You have Mr. Floyd Baptiste, who's the admin of the EDC. You have, um, um, Matthews Christian, completely new person, and you got this ignorant ass mayor that's already on the goddamn, there's already mayor of the city. So hey, it is what it is.
Now, when a negotiation takes place and you, we.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's one point I want to make. Understand, like, like remember Ken Law said this in black and white? So where in the hell are this fictitious negotiation coming from? None of that crap matters when you dealing business. You deal with business in black and white. You deal with business with contracts. Understand, you don't just talk to, look, think about it. You're dealing with a multi-billion dollar company, billion dollar company, right? Oil and refinery, they deal business internationally, right? Do you think they're gonna be just talking with some goddamn crash dummy clowns on council, negotiate with them goddamn every goddamn day about a simple issue? Though, no, they're too busy for that. They have a contract, right? They dealing contracts with them. So understand, people, this made up ass negotiates, what are you negotiating for, right? You have a contract that's gonna be stuck. We always doing dumb ass shit where we look, where we looking like some, some goddamn wimps. We look like we don't know how to do business. You see, we already run away young people that want to do business. So why would anything positive happens over here, people? You have to understand that we are, that we have, that, that, a granddaughter knocking on the door, lost in training thought, that we have to do business, right? You know, the proper way in order for people to respect us and want to, you know, have good relations.
Negotiate with Motiva and we have something in black and white, then we can talk about that. But then until then, it's not fair. That's the transparency. So, and I'm not saying blaming anybody or fingers, it's just a fact.
Well, well unfortunately, we're gonna have to get to a point where we're gonna have to start blaming people and actually disciplining people. Well, all this stuff is too, too stupid, right? You have to start disciplining people, putting people out there. You have to start disciplining people, putting people out there on account, so we'll know. So people will know what needs to get done, right? People needs to be helicopter and, and that's just a simple fact to it.
Facts. This is facts. We're talking about a resolution twenty-three sixty, resolution, uh, with the sale of an agreement on four forty-nine, Austin. And then we talking about the special warranty, uh, deed that was signed on December the seventeenth, twenty twenty. So why would this council be blamed for something that we're not knowledgeable about? Or why would this council get its dictation from the staff and subject matter experts? Just like the animal shelter, that been there thirty-plus years. I didn't know it had a wall in there. I didn't know it was gonna be an additional ten million dollars. I didn't choose the site. I agreed upon the site because guess what? Staff, subject matter experts came before the council and said this is where they would like it to be. But then until this recently, we had no idea of that. So when the councilwoman goes back and talk about twenty twenty and read all the names of the council members, what is that proving? That we were agreeing, though total council agreed to. So, you know, transparency, that's all I'm saying. And I agree with Councilman Marks, you know, you know, if something takes place, we need to be notified. Because I can't inform individuals of this community if I'm not notified. If one talks to you and tell you about what's going on, you guys know, but we didn't know. So I don't know what else to say about that. It just, it's black and white and it's factual. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Now, Councilman, there's only one thing you said, uh, that may have been incorrect. The council didn't agree on it. I didn't agree. Okay, all right. The mayor did not, that, that did not vote.
Now, see how stupid this clown is, right? Now, he's about to show you that he doesn't run the city, but other, other means, he's gonna act like he runs the city. He's gonna act like he has an administration, right? But he's going to completely take the submissive approach. I got voted out.
Yeah, I did not acquiesce with that decision then. I do not acquiesce with the decision even now. However, we've got to move forward and being a part of this august body, once the majority decided it, I had to sign it, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Moses. I didn't want you to see that.
Now, now this motherfucking clown, we losing money out the goddamn ass, right? But this fucking fool thinks it's a joke. He thinks it's a joke because he is the one that didn't agree to it. Originally, I didn't agree to it too. Originally, you know, on the whole premises are moving in north of seventy-three, right? But if the information is correct, that, that the, the building was dilapidated, right? Dilapidated, falling down, you having problems. Then I can kind of agree to selling it, if that's true. I don't know if it's true, you know, you never can tell. These people here, they lying. They don't tell you different stuff. If that information is true, that the building is falling down, dilapidated, yeah, I, I, I do consider selling it. But not moving something north of seventy-three.
Uh, I had to sign it. However, what I think, and I think this dialogue is good. Dialogue is good because it allows us to be able to express what our individual positions are.
You got everybody serious, this motherfucker laughing.
Uh, just as I reiterate the fact that I was not a part of the, uh, winning side on that because I voted, uh, my conviction, which was and which still is to keep the health department here in this part of the city. I have, the majority has made that decision. And as Councilwoman Moses said at that time, and I believe, uh, attorney can, uh, actually deal with me with this. If I'm wrong, attorney, you stop me. She told us about the negotiations for the possibility of leasing the building from the owner that we would sell it to. Because there was a strong possibility that even at this time, we would not be able to move out of the building and have the other building complete for us to occupy. And we are coming to that point. Now, city manager said it was timely on this morning. He received something from Motiva and I appreciate them being, uh, good landlords, uh, and would give us.
Look at that, we, we, we sound so submissive right there. They'd be good landlords. Motherfuckers, you sold them the goddamn building. Now you taking a submissive, said, oh, they be thinking of being good landlords. Oh, it's, it's sad, sad.
Credit, Councilman, for the ninety-seven thousand that we had to spend and Councilman Marks for whatever other. I guess, uh, land, uh, uh, land owner, uh, uh, requirements would, it would take to keep the facility uh, in, uh, within code and, uh, that we can occupy to conduct business of the health department. Until we have the new facility, uh, restructured, uh, remodeled, uh, uh, and up and running so that we can occupy at that new location. Uh, with that in mind, Councilman Kenlaw, I would hope that, uh, you are satisfied with the information that we've gotten today.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
That each person is, is, and, and with the city manager and staff, that if, uh, and I, I, I didn't look at it and I don't view it now as something that we were maybe trying to attack anyone. I think clarity now is what we want. Sharing information in a timely fashion is what I got out of this whole thing. Okay, you know, besides whatever anybody else thinks, I think sharing information with the council. Because you get questions, as you say, it's in your district and you get questions about it, so you want to be able to answer those. Being the mayor, I get questions. I, you know, would want to be able to answer them intelligently. So with staff, if you just share with us moving forward in this. Now, uh, with the animal shelter situation, I have, and I may have an advantage on the council because I'm here just about every day and for several hours of the day, so I may get other information that they don't get. And council forgive me if I don't share it with you, if I'm not questioning it, it's so much, I move from one thing to the next thing. So it, it's not maybe front and center on my mind. Uh, we found out that, 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 that particular location that everybody had actually thought for the animal shelter would be prime and ready to go. That another location needed to be sought out. What I did find out from staff in the meeting with staff, and we happen to bring this up, that they were not going to move in such an expeditious manner as to bring to us something that say, okay, this is the next spot we're gonna put it. And maybe, and you alluded to it, and maybe run into the very same type situation that we've run into now.
Well, hell, you could at least gave the council some information on what are you looking at? We ain't gotta commit to something and say, hey, we're looking at, um, uh, we're looking at three sixty-five, looking at St. Mary's Hospital. You're looking at Proctor Street. You can always give instances of what you're looking at. You don't have to commit to nothing. You can give them something that, hey, this is what we're looking at. We're gonna do a feasibility test and work on it. That's all you have to do, Mayor.
So she divulged this morning something that maybe.
Now, 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 there we go. We listen, we listening to a non-subject matter expert, right? Understand this, when he talks about the, um, change in the EDC, he is a non-expert, non, um, subject matter expert, right? Now he's trying to give us some information from staff, but he's not a subject expert matter.
Maybe, and I don't think it was done prematurely, but through a, a location that might be able to house it. But that is pending environmental studies and other studies before they would actually tell us to, hey, this is where it's going to be.
Say what you're working on again.
We are, we are moving forward and I think that we are, we're in a good place right now with establishing.
But, but this right here is your reason why you having problems. You having a mayor that wants to shield staff because he got little friends, he's getting little pet peeves and he's getting special favors done, right? Allegedly. So he is gonna cover for Ron Burton, some of the staff, until this crap hits the fan. Now he's trying to tell you some other dumbass stuff that he done heard, probably don't really understand it all. Again, you listen to a non-subject matter expert.
Or even re-establishing how we will communicate in situations and in, 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 uh.
Why in the hell is he talking?
Well, situations like this, we'll be able to communicate that. Uh, Mayor Portem.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to concur with what you're saying. I think there's a lot to appreciate here, uh, in this dialogue and in this discussion. I think we see steel, I think, you know, we can appreciate the stewardship because, you know, we're looking at, um, you know, Councilman Marks and Councilman, uh, Kenlaw, you know, as far as stewardship is concerned. Looking, uh, forward to, um, you know, taking care of the resources. But as, um, you know, Councilwoman Moses has said, I think we can appreciate the vision that they had at that particular time of wanting to move the health department and move our city, especially with Imagine Port Arthur coming downtown. But then I think it's where we can, you know, we can appreciate staff, uh, you know, and the flexibility that they're, that they're, you know, exhibiting now. Uh, after having, you know, run into the problem that nobody, uh, that no one could foresee, uh, at, with the animal shelter site. So there's a lot here to appreciate and I think that you're right, Mayor, that we get.
Here it is, people. You got people co-signing the, the fuckery, right? You got people shielding staff on what supposed to be understanding. Hell, with the health, with the, with the, uh, animal shelter, right? You putting in an old building. You don't have any plans of what you already have. I mean, that's, doesn't make no goddamn fucking sense. You should know if they have a ten, uh, if you have a, a ten-foot wall underneath there because you built the people, you should have the records of that. Hell, again, you know, we, we, we have incompetence everywhere on council and unfortunately we have some in staff, but we don't have the council members to, to instruct, to inform and lead the city manager in a proper direction. You got Frank and Barti making excuses. That's your problem.
The opportunity to work together, to go forward, uh, and to fix all of this and, 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 you know, and just continue to be the team that we are to, to move Port Arthur forward.
Uh, Councilman Jones, oh, you're the turn, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I knew from day one about the health department be a problem, a sticky situation. I know all the time the stick situation, it could be thrown our side.
You ain't know nothing.
But, um, the mayor voted against it. I wouldn't give him the big head, his head big enough right now. He don't want to vote.
The big head on what? See, this is how fucking childish we have a council member. This is how fucking childish we have. You have Barti and you have Cal Jones, wanna give Barti credit, salivating for not voting for the, um, moving to the thing. The issue is not with it, the issue is not it moving per se. The issue is not doing what you need to do to, to facilitate a new site being up and running for the people to move in there. That's the actual issue of it, right? That's the issue.
Yes, if we, if we had a father's leave, probably we wouldn't have, wouldn't have that problem right now, you know?
All of his leave, hell, from what the information, hell, we, we be paying for a whole bunch of, um, failed doggone buildings, you know what I'm saying? Now, what you should, now, what, would have made more sense if you would have said, hey, yeah, get rid of the building because it's dilapidating, you having all them problems, but build another one south of seventy-three, that would have been good. Hell, where that old fire station is, they're on Thirty-second Street. I don't know it's over there right now. I don't even know if we still own the property with that. It'd be a good spot for it too. So it's, it's, it's many different things you could have, you know, we, we could have done, right? So just, these people crazy.
My concern, my comment, our concerns with the animal shelter. Three, three years, two and a half years discussing the animal shelter. Three years discussing animal shelter, almost three years. Okay, one-story building, little concrete, both the grass and dirt. And we can't get off the ground somewhere. That's my concern before and.
Now, Cal Jones make a good point, right? But what, what we all need to understand, they're dealing with this is how they're dealing with the streets. Nobody has a clue. Nobody's putting pressure under the city manager, right? Now, remember, you have, you have the, um, you got Barti and you got Frank. They got them shielding the city manager for any type of criticism. Now, remember Cal Jones, everybody else was ready to congratulate everybody. You wanna see everybody doing a good job? Now, everybody ain't doing a good job. Remember in the council meetings, you used to do that, hey, I wanna say thanking everybody, thanking the streets department, thanking the public works. Want to always thanking somebody when the count, when, when, when the time doesn't call for it. Now you're looking like some goddamn fools because y'all not getting shit done. Now, you know, you're looking like egg on your face. Now you want to find out what's going on. People, this is what I'm telling you when you have incompetent council.
Now, what's the deal with animals, dogs and cats?
If I may, Councilman Jones, when the discussion began on the animal shelter, um, we were told at staff to locate property that was owned by the city of Port Arthur, which limited where we could go in the city of Port Arthur. Um, when that discussion took place, as you stated, two and three, two or three years ago, we did not have funding for construction of an animal shelter, but it was simply a discussion. We did certificates of obligation, which were approved by council last year. And we did move forward with working with an architectural firm in designing a structure that would be adequate um, to not only serve the staff who runs that animal shelter, but also the animals that we take in. Um, we also looked at a facility because we have received, um, several inquiries about doing classes and things of that nature out here. Um, and even trainings within the city of Port Arthur.
Pam, let me say this, you're a good orator. You wanted the best, you can see the best water at the North Pole. You're just that good.
That's a glass, mate.
It all boils down to my problem, my concern. We all discussion, every council meeting, every year discussion. Presentation, blueprints, architects. You know, we could build a doggone animal shelter. Always discussion every, every other month.
Hopefully we'll start this year.
Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
Okay, go, go ahead to the manager.
I'm not going to believe this, this subject anymore. I've always prided my leadership on openness and transparency.
No, man, bullshit.
Can question the integrity of Ronald Burton. No. I have updated council in closed session on more than four occasions as to where we are with the health department. I keep copious notes.
Understand where we at when the health department is not a closed session item, so you must be violating Open Meetings Act again, Ron Burton council members.
In my recordings of discussions that take place in executive session, and I can go back to those. And I have it written that I updated the council on four occasions in executive session on where we are. I can retrieve those documents and take it to the next council meeting. But let me remind the council that when I didn't inform you, I did inform you on one occasion that I was in negotiation with Motiva and that negotiation was ongoing. And the council is going to be honest. I did again, not too long ago, inform the couns.
Negotiating of what? What do you have to negotiate? Y'all signed a damn contract. You, you see, people? This is where you gotta call this bull crap out. You constantly negotiate. What are you negotiating, Ron? You have a contract that states that, do you think multi-billion dollar company has people that's gonna just stay there negotiate with you over a contract that they have, Ron Burton? Come on, man, wake up, wake up, people.
That we were going to get credit in executive session for the chili system of the health department.
Yeah, we passed it. We passed it.
And that was done being open and transparent with the council. I have always informed the council as to where we are and the roadmap that I have taken with every single project. And that will, I will continue to do with absolute due diligence and respect for the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, city manager. And just to lighten up the room a little bit, oh, you all, Councilman Jones not gonna like that. He wants me to continually be serious and straight-faced. And just to lighten up the room a little bit, oh, you all, Councilman Jones not gonna like that, he wants me to continually be serious and straight faced. But that was when I told us that if we moved, we was taking our chiller. Okay, but, uh, and, and, and.
This is clown shit here.
We're just spending ninety seven thousand dollars on it and we would leave out of the building.
He is happy because he thinks he is right about an issue, right? He really wrong about it. He really wrong about it because, you know, you wanna keep that same building, right? Would you need, like I told you, he should have said, sell the building, get a new one south of seventy three. But the damn clown think he's so right and it's funny to him because he probably never, he don't be right on too much shit. But then, he wasn't even right on this, but he thinks he's right.
We would take our chiller, but, uh, we are going to do that. And we thank Motiva for that and as we even speak about Motiva, uh, county, uh, city manager, uh, I won't be here tomorrow, but I know, I know that Motiva has an announcement that they're going to make public on tomorrow. Council members, if you are able to be at the lunch on tomorrow, I'd like for you to be there and, uh, council, uh, uh, Mayor Portem, as soon as they say what they wanna say, call me. I'm gonna be in Washington, but call me as soon as they say, okay? I think I know what they're gonna say, but I have to act like I don't know what they're gonna say, okay? Thank you, okay? So, Councilman Kenlaw, we are, we good with this, you brought this up?
We are absolutely good, um, just, he just, you know, he mentioned it before, but he got the email this morning, so I don't know how that happened, but, you know, about the credit, so. Uh, I'm good at this point, so, uh, I guess we can just move on. Thank you, Pam, for your, both, uh, the health department and the animal shelter, so. Uh, good job, Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. And it take, it takes, it takes discussions like this so that we can continue to be the august body of which we are. Now, we will move now to reports, uh, well, item, uh, number five, Roman numeral five.
There we go, people, we just had it, again, reestablishing again, this is, this is why we having problems. Counselor does not know how to do business. Counselor's lying here standing there in negotiation for a contract they already have, what negotiation, yeah, for what? We already know about the, the doggone ninety seven thousand, it's supposed to give you back on your thing, but hell, you done took, you about to take what, two eighty from them? How much that contract is, so it really doesn't matter. So, uh, people, you know, um, appreciate y'all for listening, go ahead and, um, go ahead and share that, hit the like button, smash the like button, pimp slap the like button. Go ahead, doing everything and let everybody know what's going on, people, peace.